Charlie's not coming, he's in the doctor's office and the West will say he'll be, he won't make closed session.
What is A8?
I'll call the meeting to order. I need a motion to go into closed session for A7 and A8.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion based on the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711. We go into closed session for A7 legal, which is discussion and legal counsel and staff pertaining to actual or probable litigation. And then legal, A8 legal, which is consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specifically the matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. So there's two separate legal.
Second. Motion in a second, is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I really don't want to continue to have to say no, but as I have mentioned in the past, I feel like we're not being descriptive enough, and I just want to go on the record and have that as part of the minute. I spoke briefly with our attorney, and I know he has counseled us that we're okay with this, but I would like, even if it's just for myself, an advisory opinion from the Virginia Freedom of Information Advisory Council. And as he stated, it's not a court, it's just an advisory. And if I, I just need to feel better about it myself, so.
Okay. I'll call the meeting back to order. First thing I'd like to see is Ms. Woods is going to lead us in the pledge and Ms. Hayden in the invocation. Or, last verse, Ms. Hayden in the invocation and then the pledge, excuse me.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for today and the opportunity to gather together and work for your good. I ask that you guide and direct the hearts and minds of our county leaders and the protection of our citizens. Let us all remember we are meant to be examples of your love and grace and let our actions show that character. Be with us and always stay in faith, and your name be praised. Amen.
Thanks.
Thanks, ladies and gentlemen, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, and the people who live in this land.
Got a full house to welcome everybody. I need a motion from closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion based on the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711. We went into closed session for two legal issues. First is A7 legal, a discussion with legal counsel and staff pertaining to actual probable litigation. And the second one was A8 legal, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Got a motion on the floor, is there a second? Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained? Did you abstain or?
No.
Abstained?
No, no.
Okay. We got a couple new faces, if you'd like to do the honors, sir.
Absolutely. I'm happy to announce today that we do have some new faces, staff-wise here in the county. I'll start with my right. We have Ms. Lisa Richardson, who is now our new Assistant County Administrator here in Smith County after an extensive search. We're very proud to have her join us. She's a familiar face within this facility and throughout the county, so congratulations, Lisa, on that. Our second one, and for those of you that have been here, I always refer to see Collins because I can't always see around him, but there's a fellow here in the white shirt, his name is Mr. Wayne Smith. Mr. Smith has joined us this week, and he will be leading our projects. He's a projects coordinator here in Smith County. We've got a number of infrastructure projects that are out there, and we're looking forward to getting him involved in those, as well as some additional projects that we'll talk about some later in this meeting and as we move forward. So, very glad to have Wayne on board with us, look forward to what he brings to the table and how he continues to make us move forward, and very excited to have Lisa join us up top. So, thanks to both of you guys.
Thank you. Lisa, you are a familiar face, so congratulations, Wayne, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
We need a motion for the adoption of the agenda, the additional agenda as presented.
Move to adoption, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion in a second, is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Minutes of the previous meeting from March 12th to March 28th of 2019.
Move to adoption.
Motion in a second, is there any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
There's only one thing that I would like to add.
Okay.
Is on the minutes for the 12, it mentions that I voted opposing closed session due to concerns with the procedure.
Uh huh.
And I would like it to reflect that I felt like it wasn't being descriptive enough. You could change that, Kelly.
Chairman, we can, we can make that note change if that would, would allow for the votes to be taken on the minutes, we'll make that, with that correction, do a note.
Okay. Is that okay with the first one and the second? All those in favor? Financial statement or status, Mr. Carter?
Chairman, members of the board, first of all, I'd like to identify, I know we have several in attendance today, and that's, that's very good. Glad to see people come out. We discussed at the last meeting the opportunity maybe to share some of this information on a law or, or some nature. We've had our IT staff look at it, there's limited abilities within this room. For those of you that have sat on the board for a while, you may remember that at one point we actually shown that behind you. The problem with that is it blinded most of you during the whole thing. So what we've done as a temporary basis is if anyone would like copies of what we have, we have those over here on the table, that will provide you an opportunity to follow along with what, what I'm about to say. If we run out of copies, we'll make more. So, hopefully for the interim, we can look at it from that standpoint.
Okay.
So, to begin with, you have your usual packet, first section within that is a revenue summary. Very quickly, we'll go on page, it starts at two, I've identified several times, page one is, is really nothing. Page two identifies what's under Fund One, under your revenue. You can see, when you go down the year-to-date, we've collected 23 million, 232, 280, 285. If you go to the uncollected, you can see that we're right at collecting, oh, there's 1.12% left of uncollected, so that number is, is right on, and hopefully we'll surpass that the next couple of months go by. Pages three, four, five, and six of that revenue report are summaries of the different funds that the county has. It also identifies the year-to-dates as well. If you look at the bottom of page six, you'll see a total year-to-date amount of 65 million, We have an outstanding balance of 23 million, 271, 846, 45, or roughly 26% left of the entire revenues left to collect from this point forward. So, right on, right on track and projection with that. The next report you see is an expenditure listing, same timeframe, as we, as we go through that, page one of this one shows a year-to-date amount on the expenditures under Fund One of 16 million, 267, 594, 69. There's 8 million, 538, 701, 31 left. So, expenditure-wise, we have about 34% remaining in the expenditure for the next few months. So, right, right in line with that, again, pages two, three, four, and five are fund total numbers that coincide with that. You get to the bottom of page five, under the year-to-date, you'll see a 58 million, 537, 199, 22, and roughly about 33% remaining overall as the expenditures. So, in comparison of what these reports generate revenue versus expenditures, we are right at, if I get my numbers right, 6 million, 555, 554, in advance revenue expenditures on those two reports. So, we will continue to monitor and track those over the next two months accordingly. The next piece of paper you have is a single sheet. It's basically a listing of all the departments that fall within the budget as well. We have a comparison sheet of 18, we have, we have three columns. To the left is the department, to the next left is where we are here in 19. The next column is what we were doing in 18 and the difference. That tells you exactly which department each month, and keep in mind, these are timing things, sometimes there are payments that come out that, that impact or affect these, but bottom line, if you go to the very bottom, you'll see under the April 19 column that we have a total expenditure of 1 million, 193, 422, 92. A year ago in 18, 1 million, 201, 149, 51. So we're actually 7,726, 59 better in accounts payable for this year versus same timeframe as last year. And that's what that sheet identifies. The next report again is a single paid report, and it is the one that has all of the years prior, it goes all the way back to 2011, 12, all the way up to current, 18, 19. That gives you an idea across the years, at, at this snapshot during each fiscal year, what, what the difference in revenues and expenditures were. Always go to the last one to compare, 17, 18, a year ago, our difference was 7 million, 732, 966, 20. This year, we're at 8 million, 664, 444, 85. So on this report is 931,478, 65 more, 18, 19 than it was 17, 18. And then to, to finish these out, we have the reports that are generated by the treasurer's office. The first one at the top should say county expenses and appropriations. We've, we've combined these to be able to better view them. So if you look at the left-hand side, that's the year-ago numbers, the right-hand side is the, are current numbers. So real quickly, I'll, I'll start where it begins on both. It says bank balance and CD investments. In 2018, there was 13 million, 283, 192, 14. In 19, there's 13 million, 310, 608, 55. So, there's a $27,416 difference there. You go down, you see the deposits and the expenses for both. Deposits in 18, 5 million, 356, 260. Deposits in 19, 6 million, 483, 984. Expenses, 18, 6 million, 496, 185. Expenses, 19, 6 million, 413, 741. As you remember, we do have some incentive amounts that we are fortunate to have from some of our business expansions here in the county, so we're tracking those separately as we should. There's subtotals in 18 of those, 12 million, 143, 266, 77. Subtotal in 19, 12 million, 955, 851, 37. So we're up 812,000, 8460. We go to your unspent, your unspent in 18 was 531,000, 782, 23. In 19, it's 610, 771. Those numbers are actually shown on the second page, and we'll get to those, but where we all get to is the balance. So in 18, your balance was 11 million, 611, 484, 54. In 19, your balance is 12 million, 345, 837. So we've actually gained 733,595, 83. So, we're, we're moving in that positive direction. The COF funds that are accounted for are held separately, and they do not provide information within these, they're just unidentified. The second page of that report is basically an understanding of the unspent numbers that are identified on the page prior. And very quickly, social services on 18 was carrying a 52,000, 390, 48, unspent balance. This, this 19, they're carrying a 137, 156, 06. So they're up 84,765, 58. The school operations was carrying 340,809, 60 cent unspent balance this time last year. This year, they're carrying 427, 339, 26, which is up 86,529, 66. And the county a year ago was carrying an unspent balance of 138, 582, 15. This year, we're carrying 46,275, 68, so we're down 92,306, 47. So again, these all have impacts on what's been spent out, if there's any vehicles on hold, etc., these are timing mechanisms. But for this snapshot, we're certainly on track to, to continue providing for a larger account balance, which is what we all intend to have. And the final report is your treasurer's accountability report, it's three or four pages that identify the amounts associated with each individual account that the treasurer's office tracks. I encourage you all to look at that for questions. Those come directly from the treasurer, so I would ask that you can either contact me to relay or contact him directly. But as we close the update out, your appropriation listing for today, you certainly have the availability to consider all those appropriations, should be necessary.
Got any questions? Thank you. I'll open citizens' time. Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh huh.
Could I, I don't mean to interrupt you, and I, I may be getting ahead of myself, but if, is there several people on here pertaining to the Rouse outlaw mountain that's wanting to speak today during citizens' time, other than you? We, we have, would you care to discuss that, and that may be legal form, I appreciate, and I give you time to speak, I just, yeah, I just wanted to, that will address probably some of your own concerns, and then you're welcome to speak later. I just wanted to, to touch base with where we are on that, and that might answer some questions for you guys.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, as, as I've told you once before in, in closed session, the matter was pending in the Smith Circuit Court. It was a, a case involving an alleged violation of the zoning ordinance that was brought to the county. The case has now been disposed of by a final order that was entered on April the 8th. Essentially, the provisions provide that, that the parties, the Rouses, will be enjoined from operating any commercial entities up there as those enumerated in the order. That is the extent of what the county's authority would be to regulate the use of the property. That would dispose of, of the case with respect to the county.
Thank you. I just wanted to put that out there, and that, that may answer questions, but you're welcome to speak, it's citizens' time, you're welcome to speak.
Thank you. I'm Pamela Rouse, Sullivan at 325 Lyons Gap Road, Chillicothe. I own property at 571 Middle Fork Road. And I'm not sure, I don't really have a question, I just thought that you guys needed to meet me. I've talked with you, I've talked with Mr. Ray, and I've talked with Mr. Carter, all who have been very, very nice and very, very helpful, especially Mr. Carter. We got two letters from Mr. Williams saying that we couldn't have a ATV park, a commercial ATV park. We closed that August the 24th, 2018. We thought it was done. We had no idea that our lovely neighbors were coming up here still complaining. I wasn't made aware of that until Sheriff, Chip Schuler, told me that I should watch the videos, and they're very telling. They can't deny what they've said and the accusations that they've made. The neighbors have come and told you half truths, and I guess I want to start by the very first meeting, which is probably the one that came in to attend, was back in maybe May, August, somewhere back last year. I believe Susie Peak and Haley Peak alluded to you on how afraid that they were that we were in their backyard. They somehow forgot to tell you that they own 60 acres as an estate that was given to them, we pay for our property, that was given to them in between us. And if you all want to take a look at this, I'd like you to take a look at it. This property, it goes all the way to the mountain, and, I'll do that in a minute, they live over here, and this is their 60 acres that they inherited. So you see, there's a lot of ground between all of us. The neighbors down here are Kathy and Dewey Collins. Their grandchildren come up and ride with us every week. They don't seem to have all the problems that these other neighbors seem to be having. And I invite you guys to ask me any questions that you want to ask. You can stop me at any time. We've had our trailer tires shot out, we've been shot at. These are some pictures of cow manure in the road, in the right. This is all they have to do with their time, I suppose. Take a look at those. There's Armando, Armando Socros that came up here and alluded that we had contaminated his water. Well, there's 25 acres between us and him that the Atkinson family owned. I believe Mr. Darrell Peak now owns that, but he didn't buy that property until, I think, September, October, September. And I want to understand, I want you guys to understand that I realize that you, that your power exists only for the ordinances. And I'm going to state it one more time, even after this court order. We closed, we are in compliance, we complied with everything you guys ask us to do or not to do. But yet, I feel bad for you guys because you still have to continue with these neighbors. They're horrible. They have treated us horribly. I'll accept Kathy and Dewey. And there's been several others down the street that have contacted us since my husband's accident, and they've kind of put it all together. They don't want to be a part of all of this. Now, I'd be happy to supply you guys with names and addresses, phone numbers, but there's, I could stand here for hours and tell you all the things that they've done to us, but it's, it's really new because you guys have no jurisdiction or authority or anything other than the zoning ordinance. And again, let me state, I have complied with your zoning ordinances from the very beginning. I tried to get a special land use permit, couldn't do that. So, we closed the ATV park. However, it is my property. My friends and my family are going to ride till hell freezes over. That's just how simple that is, because it's mine. And I guess that's pretty much all I have to say, unless you guys have a question, it won't ask me.
Well, I, I appreciate you coming. We try to leave citizens' time open for everybody and not get into an interaction type of an ordeal with it, it's kind of here to listen, and sometimes we have to address, but.
Thanks, Pete.
Right there, there you are.
Please feel free to give me a call if there's anything else I can do to help you all, maybe any sign in the court order gives you all a leg to stand on. You can say we don't want to hear anymore unless it has to do with zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darrell Peak?
I'm Darrell Peak, my address is 23638 Mead Drive in Avonlea, but I own adjacent property in Smith County, adjacent to the Rouses, and that's why I'm here tonight. I have a couple complaints, and, and you know, this may be something that could be settled in civil court, but I still wanted to make my concerns known. There have been several four-wheeler trails and lots of timber cut down on part of the property that I own next to the Rouses. I've made several complaints about that. There's also been lots of people in and out riding four-wheelers and motorcycles, and I understand that an accident occurred a few weeks ago, and I wasn't in town when it happened, but I'm, you know, I'd like to know, there's no report, a police report that I can verify, but I'd like to know if that occurred on my property or not, because I've been having trouble with the trespassing with ATVs and motorcycles. Each time that I have, you know, witnessed the trespassing on my property, I have been in contact with the sheriff's office trying to get, you know, some help, you know, to make it stop. I did get a trespassing warrant against Mr. Rouse, Josh Rouse, and since that warrant was issued, you know, the trespassing hasn't stopped. One day I was back there and I witnessed it, and I tried to call the sheriff's department, you know, to get some help because, you know, there's already a warrant out for that complaint, and however, the, you know, activity didn't stop. And I have yet to get a deputy or any law enforcement to come out and, you know, address the concern. However, it does seem that every time that a concern or a complaint has been made about me or members of my family that live around there nearby, there's always been a deputy to show up. And, you know, I think that, you know, that the, you know, the county needs to take an objective view about what's going on, you know, but we also need to have, you know, if we have a complaint, that's a legitimate concern, then we need to have, you know, a response about it. Another event that happened recently is my aunt and uncle own adjacent property that is south of my property. It borders my property, but it also borders the Rouses' property. And I know the Rouses, I've been crossing part of their land to get into their property, but they have cut down a gate that is actually on my aunt's property. They have cut through the chain a couple times, they've actually cut the posts that the gate sits on, taken a chainsaw and just chopped off the, the posts that the gate's on, and just knocked it over and went on their way. You know, this is not my property, and, you know, honestly, none of my business, but I can tell you that, that it did happen, and the gate is not sitting on the Rouses' property. It's also not sitting on a right-of-way to the Rouses' property. They also had a mailbox knocked over last weekend. Law enforcement was called about that several times. We didn't get a response, and by we, I mean my family, but there was no response to it until Tuesday, and that's when I actually talked to the state police and convinced them to come out there. But as far as I know, the investigation has been done into who knocked over the mailbox. And there's been no investigation, you know, as far as the gate either. I know that my cousins and my aunt and uncle have video evidence of the gut, of the gate being cut down, and a vehicle, you know, in front of the mailbox when it's knocked over. But, you know, my concern is, is that this is going to keep escalating, things like this are going to keep happening, you know, it's going to put, you know, my family in danger, it's going to put me in danger. I own the adjacent property, I have five kids that are back there all the time, we go back there hunting, we go back there camping, we go back there just hiking. We also have four-wheelers that we ride back there on our park. You know, but as easy as that accident happened a few weeks ago on the Rouses' property, assuming that it was on the Rouses' property, if they're coming through on these cut trails that is on my property, they could easily run into one of my kids, or run into me, or both. And, you know, they have. And they have all their right to be on their property, that is without a doubt, but the trespassing and the violence and the property destruction needs to be addressed, it needs to be stopped, there needs to be a law enforcement response to it when it happens. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Linda Lormer?
I'm Linda Lormer from, I live at 216 Gribbly Avenue, Chilhawley, Virginia. I'm here representing Saltwell Rescue Squad. I have some papers for you. We're here as a follow-up for the, we were here last month.
Okay.
I just wanted to give you an update on Saltwell Rescue. We were able to get $20,000 from the town of Saltwell on Thursday after the Board of Supervisors meeting, and we would not have been able to meet our weekly payroll period on 3/26. With the $20,000, we'll be able to make payroll through 4/23. And you have some papers on weekly payroll. By 4:30, we will need more money for payroll. Our plans are to sell a tractor, Kubota, and trailer, and a closed four-wheel utility trailer. And the town of Saltwell is looking at purchasing the tractor, and the Saltwell Volunteer Fire Department is looking at purchasing the Kubota, the towing trailer, and the closed utility trailer. We've only used the tractor in the past year to plow snow from the parking lot, but if the fire department does buy the Kubota, we would still have access to using it for patient transport. With, say, approximately $25,000 from these items, it would cover payroll through May the 28th. With the money we have and partial billing coming in, we've continued to pay our bills. This is reflected in the profit and loss reports from January through March. Yesterday, we were able to pay April's bills that have come in so far and have enough to continue to pay on them. Our billing EMS consultant is showing $10,000 pending payments to come in immediately. And of course, we've seen $4,000 of that money yesterday. We will pay May's bills with that money. And we anticipate June's billing money along with the fundraising should pay our bills and payroll for June. So we are in the good operating expenses till July 1st. So we're glad to bring that to you. Medicare has received our re-enrollment, and that has been processed. Our billing is with EMS consultants, and it is, our calls are queued on Mondays for the week, sent to billing, and they are billed on Thursdays. And on Friday, and they send us a report. Fundraising, we've had a yard sale, two weekends in March, and made $1,900. Saltwell residents and those who attended were very generous in their donations, and were in the process of a gun raffle that we will raffle off April the 27th, and we expect to make a couple thousand off it. We have another gun raffle that will raffle off May the 25th and expect to make a couple thousand off it. We're having a bake sale in Saltwell this Saturday in connection with the Easter egg hunt. Estimated income, maybe $500 to $1,000. We are scheduling a gospel sing concert, and that'll be by donations. We have paid staff 24/7. We went to shift pay that we told you about last month. We haven't lost any staff. All staff is helping with fundraising. We're working on our budget request for starting in July. And you'll have that at y'all's next meeting, or do you need that sooner? Please, budget.
I think that's fine, ma'am.
At May's meeting? Okay. If you need it sooner, just give us a call. In summary, the $20,000 from the town of Saltwell kept EMS service local so the bids could be submitted. The bids have been submitted and have been opened last week. The sale of equipment not being used kept us open until billing started coming in. And what we wanted to prevent and have been able to do with the town of Saltwell helping us with $20,000 was calls going off in Saltwell and people having to come from Chilhawley and land or blade to Saltwell for every call. There are times we have roll calls on second calls and occasionally roll the first call if there was a problem with staff being there. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Jim Kelly?
I'm Jim Kelly, 1126 Prater Lane, Marion, Virginia. I was coming in support of the overlook there on top of Walker Mountain off 16. That project has been in the works for about six years, acquiring the money necessary to do that project. And it's all complete. The engineering has been done for that project and is basically ready to go out to bid except for one small piece of property that's owned by J.S. Staley. And I'd like to, I think the project would be an enhancement for the park. It'd be a place for people from the park to go look. It'd be a tourism spot for people coming to the county. And I'm here as an individual and as president of Friends of Hunger Motor State Park, which has 60, 70 members, and we'd like to urge the board to reconsider and allow J.S. to donate that property. And he's willing to donate it if we're just allowing to put a plaque there honoring his father, who was a prominent doctor and citizen here in Marion several years ago. And we don't really see any conflict with that, and we'd just like to urge the board to reconsider and allow them to donate that property. And I think it would be good if, you know, in the future for the park and everyone else from working with him, if we had a willing landowner there that was willing to work with us and to keep it clean and everything else. So that's the main reason I'm here, is just to see, trying to get, so we can go ahead and bid that project out. Everything's ready to go except for that small piece of property. And if we could just allow him to donate that and put a plaque there, then it could be completed this year. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Susie Peak?
My name is Susie Peak, and I live at 633 Middle Fork Road. This is in reference to the corruption that's going on at Middle Fork Road. First of all, I want to respond to my son that made a statement, and it seems like the Rouses have no respect for us or our property. And she made that evident when she disrupted him when he was making his statement. And she abruptly shouted out, which was no call for that. That's just a way of, they have no disrespect for anybody, anybody's land. And one thing I want to comment on is she did make the statement that, yes, the land that I own was inherited, but I continue to pay taxes on it every year, and I will continue to pass that down along to my two boys once I am done with it, when I'm no longer here. So it will remain in the family, and then again, they will pass it on down to their kids. So it was inherited, it is a family inheritance, and it is our property. The thing of it is, with the Rouses', we own the property, but with them, they have no boundaries because they come, they are continuously coming on our property, cutting down timber, cutting trails. That's my insult that, you know, that I feel like they can do whatever they want to on their land, but they need to stay on their land, not ours. And our property, continuing with the mailboxes and that type of thing, then, they can do whatever they want to on theirs, you know, leave our property alone, even our houses and on our mountain land too then. And then another thing, you know, there was an accident a couple of weeks ago where two people were severely injured. One almost lost his life. Who else is going to get hurt and who else is going to, you know, their lives going to end before anything's done with it? I mean, like I said, they can do anything on their property, but still, they continue to enforce themselves on other people's property. And the thing of it is, if it was to come out and say, "Hey, well, this person was hurt on my property, this person was hurt on my son's property," then who's liable for that accident? That's what I'm concerned about too, is that as long as they continue to stay on their own property, they can do whatever they want because we, I know that there's nothing going to be done about the noise and all of the traffic coming in and out of there at all times of the night, and all of the gunfire that goes on up there then. And another thing then, we do hear gunshots, and it's nothing, we have a lot of young kids that play out in the yard, and just like the incident happened with a little girl in Mountain City, they got shot by a stray bullet. Is that going to be the next step? You know, there's somebody getting hurt because of their carelessness. And they're just being disrespectful to anybody. I mean, we do know that they are on our property. We do know when they first went in front, they cut timber off of it, and they also cut trails on it because the property is not like what it was before they come in. And I've lived there for 45 years, and this is the first time we've ever had any trouble on that road to this extent. And you just feel like, you know, that, you know, like, nothing's going to be stopped. I mean, like I said, you know, they can do whatever they want to on the property. They need to stay off of our property and the other adjoining properties that's connected to them. I mean, it's just, it's just plain and simply, you know, they need to quit the distraction of property going on around in that community, whether it be the mailboxes and other people's personal property. I know this is almost like a never-ending story that has gone on and on and on, but like I said, who else is going to need to get hurt before something's done about it? I mean, it seems like we can call the authorities and no one comes, but I guarantee if one of them called anybody, then somebody, I mean, somebody right there right away. I mean, it's just, it's just not, it's just a lot of corruption that I feel like that the county knows about, but whether they don't have the evidence of it, but they need to listen to us and the neighbors. I mean, we are there. We are witnessing it every day, day in and day out.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Pete, Mr. Pete, everybody here is with this, Ms. Rouse. It's gotten out of hand as far as what the board's responsibility is. I understand the problems of what you're going through, but the county has, as the chairman stated, a final order signed by a judge, that she will not, zoning exists only for certain things. She signed a final order, the judge has signed it, that she's not doing this, and she's not going to do it. I don't take sides. I look at the facts, you know, and I give there's a lot of unhappy people out there. Coming in here and there when we have nothing, when we've done our part, the order's here. We can't do anything about trespassing, we can't do anything about what the sheriff does. That's him. He don't work for us. He runs for office on his own. So, you know, other than the zoning permit, that's all we have control of. Ms. Rouse, even though you called me at a bad time, you made an appointment. It's your property, you want to ride a four-wheeler? Ride a four-wheeler. I do it on my property. I feel like we've done our part as living up to the zone. Appreciate the attorney. I feel sorry for everybody. But in advice, you know, if it was me, I'd let the courts handle it. I'd let whoever handle it. It's out of the board of supervisors' hands for once it leaves zoning. So I just want to make that clear again.
Thank you. Anna Lee, the board?
My name is Anna Lee DeBoord, and we live at 343 College Street here in Marion. And I've got an invitation for you. On the 28th of this month, which is a Sunday afternoon, the museum is going to open in downtown Marion. We'd love to have you drop in. We're open from 2:00 to 4:00 on that Sunday. Our speaker is going to be Brian Tibbs, who's going to talk about the history of the Lincoln Theater. And the museum, if you don't know where it is, it's, if you walk out of our front door, you walk across the street to Wolf's Barbecue, and we're right next to the Lincoln Theater. We have probably a third of our museum is military. We have one Civil War uniform. One, I love this one, it's a World War I war uniform with a picture of the gentleman who was wearing it, and it's in a display case, and across from it is his son in his World War II uniform. So we had over 1,600 visitors last year, and we are at the shoe budget of the, I mean, we have a budget that's like very tiny. It's like the school budget. So, we take donations, we don't charge. I remember one afternoon, a young family came in and they asked how much it would be, and I was like, mm, and I figured it out, and I said, "You know what? Just come in." And we ended up making more off our donations than we did charging people to come in. We're there for the county. And it's not all Smith County, but probably 90% of it covers our county. It's Indian relics, pioneer things. We have a display that we're setting up right now to honor the ladies who are going to have their monument in Richmond. And we just love for y'all to come in. And we've got speakers every month, and one of them is on Moonshine. That should be an interesting one. And we found an old steel upstairs that, I didn't know what it was, but it has holes punched in it, but, so we're going to haul that down when it comes time for that. But, yeah, we just love to have you drop in, and that goes for everybody here. Please come by. And we're open six days a week. We're open from 11:00 to 4:00 during the week, Friday nights, and then Saturdays afternoons, and we're trying to correlate with Song of the Mountains, so when they're having a production, we'll be open for the people to come in before, so they'll have something to do, and then they can go eat in town and spend their money here in the county. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all that signed up to speak at Citizens' Time. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak?
I'd just like to, without getting a rebuttal started, agree with Mr. Stevenson that, I know this issue with the four-wheelers has been pretty big and brought before us time and time again. Again, with Mr. Stevenson's comments, we are what we have. So that's to the extent that we can do. I sympathize with you. The neighborhood feeling like that they need to tell somebody, and they come before us to tell that, but we have done what we can do. So Citizens' Time is welcome to anybody to come and speak at any time, but this issue is, that's kind of as far as the board of supervisors takes that. So I appreciate the time and everybody that's come pertaining to that. So, that being said, I'll close Citizens' Time.
We're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we'll be right back. Do the payment of the invoices? Uh, wait a second. Let me, I'll come back to that. John Becktoe from VDOT, if you'd like to come up, you were on for 5:30, and it's 6:00, so if you would come up- 6:00 o'clock, so if you would come up for the six-year plan.
Yes, and like I said, my name's John Becktoe, I'm the Assistant Resident Engineer at the Abenin Residency and, uh, for VDOT. And tonight, we're here to talk about the resolution before you for the approval of the secondary six-year plan. Um, this will be the plan beginning, um, in July, this July, July 19th through June So as you look at it, each year, Smith County receives approximately $140,000 to $180,000 of telefees and unpaid, uh, road funds from the state. And so these funds have been previously, previously allocated to a number of projects throughout, last year was through June 2023, and this fills in the, the remaining two years of the, of the program. Um, over the past several years, we've used these funds to, to hard surface a lot of gravel roads throughout the, the county. And, um, you know, through that rural rustic program, those roads are able to be upgraded for about $150,000 to $200,000 per mile. So that's a lot cheaper than, um, you know, some of the other programs that we're doing. The limiting factors of the program are, uh, the roads have to have a traffic count of 50 and they need to have a road surface of at least 16 feet for safety in most cases. Dead ends can be a little bit narrower, but on two, on through roads, it needs to be the 16 feet. Um, sometimes when we go through, if a road has significant need for widening, it often becomes too expensive for this program. I know Washington County, uh, recently did a wider one and it took up several years of funding and, you know, instead of, you know, this is just a way to get, you know, kind of spread it out over and affect a lot more people across the, uh, across the county as well. This year, uh, or first last year, we completed Twilight Road, about 676, 676, and Back Meadows Lane, as well as Slabtown Road. In the next few weeks, we're going to be starting Lead Mine Road, Sand Mine Road, and Holiday Drive, should all be completed this summer. Um, as you look at the, the list, um, there's three of them this year, some of that's because we were, had been, you know, there were some funds that had been left over on previous projects that we were able to allocate to move those up and get those, um, sooner than what they had originally been projected. The rest of, of the program, um, has Sprouse Creek Road, uh, next year, Jarvis Hollow Road, Cornet Road, Old Flash Road, Kegley Lane, and Rosenbaum Hollow Road. Um, you know, as projects wrap up, the money doesn't, you know, the money's not used on one of these projects, it doesn't disappear, it gets rolled to one of the next projects on the priority list. And that's how, again, that's how we've been able to move some of these up this year. Um, several of the ones, Sand Mine Road and Holiday Road, and Holiday Drive rather, this year, they're both about two tenths of a mile long, so they're fairly short roads. And that's why they, we're seeing three compared to some of these other years where you have longer, longer stretches on there. Um, you know, each year, we try to go through and look at the remaining routes, remaining gravel roads on the, uh, on the program and just to make sure that they meet the criteria. And we typically have worked with Michael and we look forward to working with Lisa and Wayne too on those, as the case may be, to, uh, to find which roads need to be on there and, and keep updating the program through the years. So if you have any questions or if we need to read the public hearing notice or what, or the, uh...
The resolution.
Resolution.
Yeah, if you, if you don't care, that'd be fantastic for us.
Right. So the resolution is the approval of the secondary highway six-year plan for 2019, 2020 through 2024, 2025, and a construction priority list for 2019, 2020 for Smith County, Virginia. Whereas Sections 33.1-23 and 33 dot 1-23.4 of the 1950 Code of Virginia, as amended, provides the opportunity for each county to work with the Virginia Department of Transportation in developing a secondary six-year road plan. And whereas this board has previously agreed to assist in the preparation of this plan in accordance with the Virginia Department of Transportation policies and procedures, and participated in a public hearing on the proposed plan, 2019, 20 through 2024, 25, as well as the construction priority list of 2019, 2020, on April 9th, 2019, after duly advertised so that all citizens of the county have the opportunity to, to participate in said hearing and to make comments and recommending, recommendations concerning the proposed plan and priority list. And whereas Conrad Hill was going to be here today, but he had a, a family issue where he couldn't come. So it says on here, whereas Conrad Hill, Residency Administrator, Virginia Department of Transportation, appeared before the board and recommended approval of the six-year plan for secondary roads, 2019, 2020 through 2024, 25, and the construction priority list, 2019, 2020, for Smith County, Virginia. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Smith County, Virginia, that since said plan appears to be in the best interest of the secondary road system in Smith County and the citizens residing on the secondary system, said secondary six-year plan, 2019, 20 through 2024, 25, and construction priority list, 2019, 20, are hereby approved as presented at the public hearing.
Thank you, John. So, Mr. C., you just walked in. Do we need to just set the public hearing for that, is what we need to do tonight? For the six-year plan, we just read the resolution, so we just need to set the public hearing itself or we approve the res? Okay. Come on, Todd.
So if we need to open it for any comment or...
Yeah, I'll, I'll open the public hearing, come on. I need, it takes a village. So we'll open the public hearing if anybody has signed up or is anybody wishing to speak on the six-year plan? Any board comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm in favor, I mean, in favor of adopting the six-year plan. But could, could I give you a list, a road? Every time you come, we always kind of... Tilly's Bridge, the single-lane bridge, I mean, at some point in the past, they kind of asphalted it and it's all busted up and it's only a single-lane bridge and it is getting extremely rough. And I've gotten several phone calls, I drove by it the other day, but it might need some attention.
That's fine, that's fine. Uh, nobody wishing to speak, I guess I'll close the public hearing. Now, how long before we adopt this, Mr. Carter?
Uh, John, you'd like to have it as soon as you could, right? Sometimes these things go quick, Mr. Chairman. There's the opportunity to...
To do it right now?
Or our next meeting is in the middle of May, John, how does that fit your schedule?
I know, uh, I mean, if we can do it, if there's any other, we don't think there's going to be any changes to it. And, you know, it's good, if we can get it now, it's before the fiscal year and, you know, while they're doing some of the other planning and putting the money in there.
I'll open the floor up.
Mr. Chairman, I move we waive our rules and go ahead and address this tonight.
Motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? Others in favor? Okay, now I need a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion to approve this plan.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the six-year plan as presented. Any more discussion? Others in favor? Fair enough. Right now that I've rehearsed on what I messed up there a while ago, we'll, uh, open the public hearing for the transient occupancy tax ordinance, page 35 and 39.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read the ad to us?
Red, red for the record, please.
Public hearing notice. Smith County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing at the next regular scheduled meeting of the board on Tuesday, April 9th, 2019, at 6:00 PM at the Smith County Office Building, 121 Bagley Circle, Marion, Virginia. This hearing will consider the readoption of an amendment to the Smith County Transit Occupancy Tax pursuant to amended Section 58.1-3819 of the Code of Virginia. The hearing will take public comment on amending Section 23-42, Finance and Taxation of the Smith County Code. The board will consider to readopt the transient occupancy tax ordinance of 5%. At the above-mentioned daytime and place, any citizen of Smith County subject to the rules and procedures of Board of Supervisors may appear to express an opinion on this ordinance amendment. Full copy of the proposed amendment to the Smith County Code is on file at the address given above, County Administrator's Office, 121 Bagley Circle, Suite 100, Marion, Virginia, and may be reviewed or a copy obtained Monday through Friday during normal business hours, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
I move we suspend with the reading of the rules.
Thank you. Motion and a second, any more discussion? Others in favor? Uh, nobody signed up for this either? No? Uh, no one signed up to speak? Is there anyone in the audience wish to speak at this public hearing? Quiet crowd. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Carter, does this need acted upon timeframe-wise like the last one or do we...
I'm just going third, Mr. Chairman, but he seems to have a look, but I don't...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I was, I was speaking to another board member off, off the record. So, do you have a question?
Um, the, the transient occupancy tax ordinance, does that, uh, need acted upon? Is there a timeframe, like, we need to do that tonight as well, or should we wait and do that at our next meeting? I don't know our timeframe on that, so...
Mr. Chairman, I think it'd be prudent to go ahead and adopt it, to not waive the rules and adopt it tonight if you could.
Floor's up.
Mr. Chairman, I move we waive the rules and proceed with this tonight.
Second. Motion and a second, any more discussion? Others in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the, uh, the, uh, transient occupancy, transient occupancy tax as presented to us.
Second. Motion and a second on the floor, is there any more discussion? Others in favor? Thank you. I'm going to go to our appropriations. General County, under General County Accounts Payable Listing, $1,193,422, $1,193,422.92. Payroll, $682,878.41. Auto-Draft Rule Development, $8,974. AEP Sentry Link Bills, $25,000. County Administration Fund, $5,000 for total county appropriations plus carryover of $1,900,000. Any more discussion? Others in favor? Social Services, April the 10th through April the 30th of 2019, $350,000. May 1st through May 14th, $60,000 for a total social services of $410,000. Motion and a second, any more discussion? Others in favor? School Operating Fund, Instruction, $2,800,000. Administration Attendance and Health, $100,000. Transportation, $175,000. Facilities, $400,000. School Food Service, $340,000. Technology, $100,000 for total school operating fund of $3,915,000. Any more discussion? Others in favor? Uh, School Debt Capital Outlay, $62,500,000. Any more discussion? Others in favor? Sheriff Fund, $748,1,266. Any more discussion? Others in favor? Recovery Court Fund, $749,1,940.71. Any more discussion? Building and Grounds Committee Recommendation, Mr. Stevenson?
On the additional agenda.
What page is in there?
It's not, it's not. Is it not in the...
It, it just happened.
They don't come up today, though.
May I say a couple things? Building and Grounds Committee made prior to this meeting to talk about a few things. There were some ideas that came out as a result of them that require some clarification and some continuation of discussion. So there are no other items to discuss at this time, but we will be having a meeting here in the upcoming days to further discuss it. I don't know if that sums it up and clear enough or not.
It bails me out because I didn't know we was going to burn right straight to the meeting, so it's all good.
Uh, Surplus Committee Recommendations, Mr. Call? Just a while ago.
I don't have any...
This paper's still hot.
Yeah, I didn't get it.
Uh, we'll find it.
Several we use.
Give us just a second, we're kind of hard to...
There you go. Here you go.
Uh, had a meeting just a few minutes ago for surplus items. We have, uh, six vehicles, surplus, two of them, it's a committee recommendation to remain at the vocational school for parts usage. Uh, they were 2011 Dodge sedan, two of them. We had one 2000 Jeep sport utility, another Jeep 2000 sport utility, a 2009 Chevrolet sedan, and a 210 Ford Explorer, which will go up for bids. It's a committee recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Committee recommendation to allow those two to remain at the vocational school and put an ad out in the paper for the other two to be surplus?
Yes, sir.
That's a committee recommendation. Is there any more discussion? Others in favor?
I was abstaining because they're at my building and we strip them for parts where we work on the sheriff's department cars when they come in.
Release of lien for Green Valley Court, Mr. Campbell? Page 40 in your agenda?
Mr. Chairman, on page 40, uh, I got a letter from Tom Burkett, uh, who reflects that Vivian, uh, Harold the Board and Sharon the Board have actually satisfied the, uh, special assessment on Green Valley Court. And according to me, the action from the board denied to authorize the release of that lien.
There's a motion and a second to approve the release of the lien. Others in favor? Consideration of Community Needs Survey for Broadband Project, Ms. Hayden? Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Um, I'm here to talk to you a little bit about broadband and the project that we've been dealing with. Um, I've been in communication with DHCD over the past couple of weeks, kind of honing in on the direction we need to go, um, for grant funding and just the process in general. It's a pretty complicated process. It's going to take a lot of effort and a lot of patience on everybody's part. So I, I appreciate y'all's input and, and feedback as we go along through this process. Um, we have the possibility to receive a Community Needs Assessment Planning Grant through DHCD. And that will award us up to $15,000 to work with a consulting firm to gather information for, on broadband for the community. In doing that, in, in that research, DHCD recommended CIT, which is a consulting firm, and they will help us gather the information to survey all of the county, basically the school, um, they, they lay it out for everybody, basically. Uh, they help us with the process and what we need to do and, and getting the survey out. Um, what they need for us to do is to, a motion from you all to partner with them to be able to start the process of community need survey. They'll, um, offer direction, they'll compile the data, they'll provide the completed community needs assessment. And once we have that community needs assessment, we will be able to apply for full funding for different grants for the completed project. Um, so basically, and it kind of turned a little bit because we had, um, some different direction from them after a conference call, and there's some changing at the state level. So we have to kind of be a little bit on hold with moving forward, but we're, we're good to get the motion to move forward in working with them and partnering with them and getting our local part on the roll for, for what we need to do. Um, after we do this, if you all decide to, to agree to, to partner with them, um, we will have to do some things on our end, uh, one of which is gathering a policy and management team, um, and that, that'll be a pretty lengthy... And that'll be a pretty lengthy process as well. We'll gather people from the community, from the government, from the departments, IT Department, GIS Department, and helping gather all the information that they will need to start the survey process.
Did I ask you, so DHCD, the grant is $15,000?
Just for the planning grant.
And the planning grant, they're recommending go to CIT broadband to do the survey with the $15,000?
Well, basically CIT is, they do most of their work for free. Some of the staff hours, like compiling the data and putting all the information together, they have a charge for that. And that's what the planning grant would help pay for.
Okay. You don't think it'll exceed? Do we think it'll exceed?
It depends. In conversation with DHCD, oftentimes it does exceed that, but it just depends on the size of locality and the work that's involved. How much work we can do will help offset maybe some of that.
Who you talking about, going with the GIS departments and the different departments around here to try to help?
Basically, each department that they task will gather information, like different types of broadband that are currently available, usage, speed, all of that stuff.
Go ahead. Well, I was just, I know that that is imperative that the county have that to be offered as a service throughout the county. I get that. And I know that the governor and Richmond, that's been a big push for them as well to get that into rural areas. I think what I get confused with when, with rural areas is you think, okay, so is like Smith County is a rural area, but my house is more rural than the school in downtown Marion. So, is, and I guess that's where I get my confusion, what's called rural? Is it just the area alone, or is it that it reaches out into Sugar Grove or over to places that are more rural?
They consider it unserved for these grants. And basically, that means any area under a 10, whatever, megabytes, I guess, per second speed. So, anything under that level is considered unserved and available for this grant process. And the point of this community needs assessment is to get the grant funding for the whole project. And once you have the funding for the whole project, you have to partner with a private provider or, there's different ways that you can go once you get that funding. But this is step one in that.
Do we have a provider here now that does broadband? Is that, so CenturyLink does broadband now?
CenturyLink, Comcast.
And broadband is hard connect service, is that correct?
It is. I mean, they're different form, there's actually two biggest providers, and a lot of times they get you into a private-public partnership, which is what this company works towards sometimes.
So, do we have this now, you think, at our imperative developmental places? Do we have the capacity for that now? Or is that what's considered being rural, that that would bolster that service there?
We have service provided where the providing, where the providers determine that that's where their best use is. Now, in addition to being unserved, we also have underserved. And when you mentioned 10 mega whatevers, you know, we have, that may have been good years ago. You know, all of you probably remember when you clicked on, you dial up, and you went and got your food, and you came back and you're still downloading.
Way I watch Netflix now.
So, you know, in some areas, we're better than that. But underserved and unserved are focuses on this. And, you know, we have certain infrastructure in place. We've got maps that identify the different areas in which these providers are. This is a countywide effort.
When, and I'm blabbing a little too much about this, but it interests me, I guess, is why I am. But like the, like where Sugar Grove is without cell service, right? So, I feel like that's an area that really needs cell service, all right? So, if broadband went over, that doesn't increase the chances of cell service, it disconnect, it just increases their internet access and their capabilities for that minus phones?
You can do IP phones.
You can do actual phones over IP in those areas. And I don't want to pick on the sheriff, but I know the sheriff has that capability. So.
I would take that just as open arms on yourself now. If I wanted to work them all on my computer, I couldn't do it because my internet's so slow that if I downloaded a video or a project from somebody, somebody else would have. So, I couldn't work them all.
Charlie had a question?
I had a couple questions. I think one of them got answered. This is a countywide survey and not just district specific?
Yes, sir, countywide.
Okay, because we got the grant for just the Yackens District, I believe.
That's actually in the works. But this is a countywide address us all issue.
Right. And like I said, just to reiterate, this first process for the community needs assessment is to identify those holes where there is no unserved, where they have nothing, or it's little. And that's the point of this, is to hone in on that so that we can work with a partner to get services to those areas.
If you want to put a line on everything, I'm sure.
At the age we live in, you've got to have that.
Right.
Go ahead, Curtis.
So, I mean, I guess now Sunset Digital, they've got fiber in many areas of the county. Are they, I mean, how do we, will this tie them into the, I mean, because they've got a line going to Bland, they've got, you know, they can have shootoffs.
Right.
Cover a large portion of that area, they've got a line going all the way up Highway 11.
For this particular project, to my knowledge, once we get to the point of a public-private provider, we would have to do an RFP. So, if they would be willing to submit one, you know, they could potentially work with us for that.
Kendra, you might want to point out, when, I can't remember, but the representative from Sunset Digital came, he talked about having community meetings.
Yes.
And getting on their website and identifying, basically do it by dot.
Fun fact.
Yep.
Fill them out.
They're compiling. Now, in all honesty, I don't know how well, or how much, or how many other people know to do that. We've tried to promote that, but also with them also, but it's a start. And, you know, Chairman, you mentioned Governor's Initiative, and that's some time off. And I know that there's been communication here for a while now. I hope we don't have to wait seven years to make this thing real. So, that's why we're trying to kick this thing out.
I know that's high on your agenda too, here in the county. And I just, are you kind of, and I don't mean to sound like spearheading this, but are you, you're kind of initiating some of this process? Is that something you're?
I'd like to think of it as a good team effort.
Right.
Yeah. I have made a lot of direct contact with some of the individuals, but it will definitely not be something that I have done or will do alone.
You just got the.
Yeah.
Well, go ahead, guys.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, I don't have a problem with compiling the data, but here's my worry, the longer we wait, other counties are going to be jumping on and, you know, no matter who it is that ponies up with an RFP, they've only got so much capital expenditure that they're going to do to serve rural and underserved areas. So, are we spinning in, you know, are we like a turtle slipping in mud by waiting on the compiling of the data? Or do we just, I mean, we know we need it. We know we need. Hell, I don't have, you know, I don't have to look around and drive, travel too far to tell you where we need it and what we need. So, why pay for somebody to tell us what we already know?
And I can respond to that somewhat. The data that's collected is what they have described as a needed portion of doing the RFP. We can all sit and say we don't have it, or we do have it, or we're happy or not happy. But they have to have that collected compiled data, and there is no cost to that. That's a service that they provide. State funds this group. So, when we talked to them, what was it, last week? They have a queue, and they have a number of counties that are in this queue. At that point in time, we were the third going in it. So, when we were talking about timing and mechanisms and all this good stuff, you know, we were, they were telling us this correspond with our new fiscal year. So, we're a few months off. So, apparently, it doesn't take, one of the big things I mentioned, Kendra alluded to, was utilizing the school system. You know, when school's out, we don't have the ability to send on things with the students to hit those big, you know, areas and big families within the county. If you're looking at August, when that comes back in and you send those flyers on, you're more apt to get a better turnout on some of your compilation as well, so.
And I may be oversimplifying this, but you go to Comcast, you go to CenturyLink, you go to Sunset Digital, and you say, give me a map. We've got a GIS department that can do an overlay of all three of those and give us that data pretty quickly.
We've got that information, but we've also got them saying we're not doing any more.
So, what, I guess what I'm saying is, so from those maps, we would have, what speeds are at what house? So, what more do we need?
That's a small portion of the community needs assessment. And if you'd like, I'm happy to provide you with the whole packet of information that goes into the community needs assessment. This, it's, I mean, probably 10 or 15 pages long on everything that has to be done. And the community needs assessment in its entirety is required for every DHCD project grant. So, it has to be done in the way that they require it done, not just, you know, like you're saying, obviously, we have the need. We can show you the need, we can show you the maps, but there's specific data required in a specific format.
Processes.
Right.
Having said that, and I agree with Curtis on that, but I'm concerned if you read the letter we got here, oh no, when I read it the first time, I was concerned that a lot of the research and fact finding is going to be done through the computer. And that's what we're trying to, it sounds like, you know, you're asking, you know, you ask the people who don't have computers to respond on the computer.
Right. I understand that completely. A lot of the surveys are handed out in a paper form, like the ones that will go home in the schools will be. And I actually have a copy of that, too. If you'd like to see it, I'm happy to get it to you what the survey will look like. They are making some changes to the survey, which is why you guys didn't get a completed copy of that, which is part of some of those changes that they're working through. But there are, and there will be community involvement, town hall meetings, opportunities for people to come in person to fill out these surveys. So, it's not wholeheartedly reliable on internet connection to fill out a survey.
I just think if we go this way, we as a board's got to buy in and push it. We can't just say, okay, it's been taken care of. We got to meet with the people in our districts, we got to meet with everyone, make sure people are aware, and get the responses back to get in the 45 days so we can get this project moving forward. If we just approve it and set back, I don't think we achieve anything.
Right. And there will be some need from you all on the policy team, the broadband policy team. And as I get more information from that, I'll be happy to pass it along to you, the people that are needed involvement. It's community-wide. It's leaders across all, everywhere, including hospitals and security, like the sheriff's department, governmental entities. They want to reach every corner with everybody.
Have a policy, that team started?
No, that's part of this process.
Okay.
Yeah, to identify who you want. But the first step in doing that is to agree to partner with CIT.
Process tonight was to identify the opportunity to gauge the board's interest in pursuing it. And once we evaluate or get that direction, then the doors open that we can provide better responses and communicate more efficiently on the thing. But to get it going, you've got to start.
What's a pleasure of the board? Because I didn't mean, are you finished with your presentation?
Yes, I was just here mainly to give you a little information and answer questions.
Do y'all have a preference, is there?
We got to have a DHCD actual survey. We're going to have to meet their specs up, so let's go with it, get it going. I'm second to that.
Motion in a second to proceed. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Planning Commission Recommendation, Mr. Carter? Page 42.
Mr. Carter, page 42, you found a recommendation from Planning Commission following a meeting on Thursday, March 28th. It concerns the David Fields application for a special use permit. Commission's recommendation came from Mr. Tony Dean. He made a motion to recommend the approval of Mr. Fields' special use permit request for a kennel. Commissioner David Spence seconded the motion, and it passed. Q. Spence, Wagner, Shepherd, Davison, Jr., and Dean in favor, and Campbell was absent. So, you have a 6-0 recommendation before you now have a consideration.
Well, that was a recommendation from the Planning Commission. I know that kind of got a, had a lot of, a little bit of talk going on around amongst board members and everybody else. So, I'm going to open that up for discussion before we take a vote on it. So, is there any more discussion?
I'd just like to state that I realize it come out of Planning Commission, 6-0, but you know, when you look at the property, and we got zoning, and we, 10 years ago, back in '08, I guess it was, we identified, and that means 10 years nothing's happened there. We identified that property as being one of the most developed property sites along an exit in 81. I don't know that a special use permit for a rescue clinic, a rescue facility is really what we need there. I met Mr. Fields, very nice individual, and I'm sort of, I'm like Phil, I'm not a big fan of zoning. I think if he bought the property, he should be able to do what he wants to with it. It's his property. But then again, I'm mixed on this. I really don't know. I see the need for the rescue facility, but I just wish it wasn't going there, if that makes sense, because that's all I'm going to say.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Corey, I appreciate it. I understand you. On the other hand, if somebody buys a piece of property and they pay for it, they ought to be able to do something with it. I don't think that, you know, they have come up with, they went by all the things and they, it's not a fly-by-night facility. And I get that that is prime commercial area, but I don't think seven people sitting over there and seven people sitting over here are to decide what you do with your property. It's just the way I feel about it. Yeah, I get it. I get every word you're saying about the commercial part. It is sad, but, you know, it's still work, so.
Anybody else? This isn't my fault, just I'm kind of yacky tonight, but if, I thought about this long and hard because I feel exactly the same way. I think, man, I hate to take that away if that is potential. But then I thought, all right, if that comes through and there's a multimillion dollar development wants to develop there, they could sure buy a kennel. I just don't think that that would stop a multimillion dollar facility from happening, whether they trade them space or buy the space or whatever. So, right now, I agree, it's their property. I think it's good for the community to have another, something to take care of the critters around here. And I just don't really say that that would deadstop something from happening. Plus, it gives them an ability to do something on their property that's productive. So, that's how I came to terms with it, but that's just my own thoughts. With that being said, there's, it's a committee, Planning Commission's recommendation. We need a motion to approve it, not just a committee recommendation, correct?
It is a recommendation, but a board is not a board recommendation.
Okay. So, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I need to approve the, and go along with the Planning Commission's recommendation to move forward.
Second. There's a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Local acuity agreement, Smith Machine and Fabrication, Page 43 and 46.
Mr. Chairman, I can start that one if you'd like.
Yes, sir.
A few months ago, we were fortunate to be a partner with Smith Machine and Welding in their announcement to expand the facility and to provide additional investment. As you recall, the county was fortunate to receive some funding from Tobacco Commission for this expansion. At that point in time, it was $200,000. Every Tobacco Commission agreement has an option for the county to do. You can either receive that money in advance or arrears. In this particular instance, I indicated that that money was needed upfront for the purchase of one piece of machinery that they
purchase of one piece of machinery that they needed to make this happen. As a condition of that, there's a section within the tobacco and the trough agreement that basically asks for the locality to provide an assurance or some type of collateral to hold as that money is awarded in advance. So Mr. Campbell and I had a discussion about that, and he's came up with this, and I'll allow Mr. Jeff Campbell, if you'd like to follow up on the legal part of it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, beginning on page 43 and running through, I guess, page 45, is the security agreement itself, which would provide and allow the county to obtain a security interest in the piece of equipment that's enumerated within the agreement itself. Further, on page 46, there's a UCC financing statement. This is a document that would be filed with the State Corporation Commission to perfect the security interest itself, to put all other potential creditors on notice that the county does have a security interest in it. I need to move to adopt the security agreement and authorize the chairman to enter into the same, and then also authorize the county administrator to execute the UCC financing statement and record the same with the State Corporation Commission.
We did a search to make sure that it's not cross collateral.
Yeah, it's not, not cross collateral. Were you cleared, Glenn?
Mr. Chairman, I believe your previous statement about the time.
Motion on the floor? Yes, ma'am?
I agree.
I'm sorry, I didn't see the value. What is the value of that piece of equipment?
$250,000.
$50,000, yeah.
It is in match, it's at the location.
Good, yeah.
I got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Budget Committee on page 47. There's, I noticed in your packet, there's a lot of budget minutes and stuff in there where we are going through the budget process, so it's kind of one thing made our budget, our packets a little heavy this month, but we've been doing a lot of meetings, but this one in particular, we talked with Josh Lewis for Virginia Alliance and Virginia Industrial Advancement Alliance. Then we had, what needs action taken is we had a budget transfer request from the Sheriff's Office, from, you just threw the last numbers of that line item, Kelly, or from 5503 and travel to 5103 Water and Sewer for $250. That was, trying to see if I can't tell what it was for. Repeat that one, Mr. Carter, what it's?
It was to cover a shortage in the line of water.
For Water and Sewer? Well, that was a committee recommendation to make that transfer. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Then, for page 48, that's just information loss, where we met with Mr. Lewis, that's what that was. We had an emergency communications committee. That's on page 49 and 50. That was myself and Rick Levenson, County Administrator, Charlie Harrington was here, and Ms. Woods was in attendance, Joe Arnold came. The meeting was to review the bids received for the 911 Emergency Medical Transportation Service, and RFP was placed in local papers and on Smith County's website with bids due by 4:00 PM on Friday, March 26th, and there were five bids had been received by various agencies. Charlie Harrington, the emergency management coordinator, requested for the committee to allow him time to review the bids before making any type of recommendation. So we did receive the bids, opened them and reviewed them, and Mr. Harrington wants to digest that and then get back with the committee and will further that discussion as well. Water and Sewer Committee, is that all needed for that, Mr. Carter?
Just as a note, page 50, Ali the bid was due.
Yeah, that is, that is the bids on page 50. We had a bid from Saltwater Rescue Squad, Richardson Ambulance Service, Trinity Ambulance, AMR, and Life Care Medical Transportation. There's the amounts listed as a yearly total, area that they bid on, whether it be for the entire, for the entire population, so not everybody bid on the same thing, some just bid on Area 1, some on Area 1 and 2, some on just the county as a whole, some on all three, so Charlie has those booklets and what that entailed to review, that's why he wanted to get with that, and I guess we didn't have a timeframe set for when we'd get back together and discuss that?
I think the way that I recall the schedule was working out was it would be sometime in the next week.
Okay. And this is just for informational purposes only.
That was brought up, and you all have a distribution of that.
Just informational purposes, okay. Water and Sewer Committee, Mr. Call.
Chairman, I called a meeting to order at 4:38 on the 26th. Mr. Carter, County Administrator, informed the committee of an issue Watson Callahan has concerning water service on a 15-acre tract of land he owns on Preston Hill, which is located beside Lowman's Gym at Attleworth. Mr. Carter stated Mr. Callahan is currently delinquent on his bill of late fee of $50 being assessed to the account each month, in addition to the monthly minimum charge of $47.43. Mr. Callahan, he's got a commercial tap on his property, and he spoke stating that he originally agreed to place the tap on his property during the Attleworth Sewer Project. However, he did not understand that a minimum charge would be charged for it each month of $47.43, except it was not clear to him that that would happen, and he requested that the committee dismiss all past due charges, currently on account, stating he would pay the minimum charge moving forward. After a lengthy discussion, CHIL High Supervisor Curtis Ray made a motion to reduce $350 of late fees only from Mr. Callahan's account as long as no other, Mr. Callahan, I'm sorry, as long as no other customer within the Attleworth Sewer Project had any late charges on any accounts. This is with the understanding of Mr. Callahan is still responsible for the past and current monthly charges to the account. Mr. Phil Stevenson seconded the motion, and all agreed unanimously.
Did he stay for the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a committee recommendation. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Next, Mr. Carter, informed the committee that WIS County had contacted him and expressed continued interest in pursuing a interconnection water line with Smith County. CHIL High Supervisor Curtis Ray made a motion to move forward. It's a study on Smith-WIS interconnection. Mr. Stevenson seconded the motion, and all agreed unanimously. Committee recommendation, and that's all we have.
All right, that was another committee recommendation. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor? We have a meeting coming up with, over there?
Thursday.
This Thursday? Hope you remind me. I got a new refrigerator coming. Okay, that's all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I hate to ask, but there may be a need for us to go back to page 47.
Okay. Let's do this last thing, and then we'll go into that if we need to. All right. We got to schedule a public hearing for the Smith County School Board Fiscal Year 1920 Budget for May the 14th at 6:00 PM. Everybody all right with that? If you do, I need a motion to set that public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second, set the public hearing. Any more discussion? All those in favor? So do comment time now, and then we'll go into closed session, or end it with comment time? What do you want to do? Well, we got people in the room, if you want to, because after we go into closed session, everybody's, nobody's going to come back in for comment time. Mr. Call, you got anything for supervisor comment time?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to hear that Saltwater Rescue Squad is keeping her head above water. Those people are working real hard over there to keep this thing going, and with what they've got to work with, they're doing a fantastic job, and I might commemorate them on that, job, effort, and the ability to do it for the county.
Thank you. Mr. Ray?
More of a, I guess, a question, more of, only, we had a gentleman from Friends of Hunger Mother Park talking about the donation, is there an open offer on that? I mean, is that, I was, I was kind of confused by that, as to whether, I mean, is, is there an open offer to give the land?
There is, there is some additional questions that Building Grounds Committee talked today, there's some additional questions that they'd like to speak with the owner about, so hopefully we'll get those squared up over the next week or two and be able to report back directly.
Okay.
And give a recommendation from the Building Grounds.
Okay.
That's all I got. Mr. Watkins?
I'm like, Supervisor Call, I'm happy to see we're working a little bit out with the EMS on Saltville. Let's not forget the other EMSs of the county, and they all need our help as we're working, because we've, sort of, in my opinion, we've underfunded them, and they do a tremendous service for us, and we need to work with, we need to start looking at what the future holds for all of them, not just for one.
Mr. Stevenson?
Mr. Chairman, this is public information now. I got a call this evening, somebody interested in running supervisor in my district and wanted to know if I was going to run. It comes at a time that I'm ready to answer that. I am not running, I will not be seeking office. If I make it to the January, that's 36 years I've been involved with the county, so I'm ready to do something else and move on. I encourage people who, this was a young gentleman, and he just wanted to let me know, and I appreciate that, and I encourage somebody out there, hopefully, somebody with a lot of common sense and a lot of patience to step up and run. The county needs it. I've been joining my term, but it's time for me to do something else, and I've had a few calls of, "Are you going to run, or are you not going to run?" So this settles it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Rick?
I'm good, thank you.
Miss White?
Mr. Chairman, I need to make a committee appointment. As you know, Mr. Harry Dean resigned from the Economic Development Authority, and I would like to recommend Karen Copenhaver to fill that position in the role of district.
Make that in the form of a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Got a motion and a second on the floor from this Karen, Karen Copenhaver. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. With that being said, thank you, guys. There's some new faces in the audience tonight, I see, for the first time. I've met you in Saltville, young lady, I've not seen you before, but welcome. Some of you guys in the back, I've seen some of your faces and all, so feel free to come back, we're here, we're always here. I need a motion to go back into closed session if I can, force. Personnel?
The item that I would like to, for the board to consider to go back into is A1. Personnel matters, and I'm not making this motion, I'm just reading.
I got it.
Personnel matters, discussion, consideration, interviews, prospective candidates, assignments, appointments, promotion, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of employees, and this is specifically relating to the county administrator's office.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
There's a motion on the table, is there a second? Any more discussion? All those in favor? We'll go into closed session. Thank you, guys, for hanging out with us.
Chairman, I make a motion based on Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3791, we're in closed session to discuss A1 personnel matters.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Uh, go home.